All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Could we all please stand for the pledge to the flag? All right, so, no presentations. So we go down to consent agenda, request to withdraw specific items from consent agenda. Okay. Approval of consent agenda items. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent consensus items A through U, B approved. Can we just wait one second till they catch up and scroll for us? Sorry. You wanna scroll right through U? Lucinda, you having trouble? I can't hear you.
It's frozen.
Frozen!
Everybody else can hear you. That works. All the way down through U, if you stay on that scrolling line should be helpful. Here we go, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Okay. Public comment. This is the approximate time that the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, etc. There is a two-minute time limit.
You can, guys can fight who's going first.
Do I have to hold it? No. Okay. Perfect.
We just need to make sure that we can hear you on it, okay?
Yeah.
Whatever that means.
I'll speak clearly. All right. I'm Sabrina Kraska. I was a former student here. I was lucky enough to have Coach Joe as a coach for two years throughout travel AAU and varsity basketball. Coach Joe isn't your average coach. He is a coach that will go out of his way to make sure that you are doing the right thing, working hard enough, and being pushed to your full potential, whether it is on or off the court. Coach Joe has taught me so much within those two years and helped shape me into the young adult that I am today. I have dealt with bad coaches in college, and without Joe and Falco's coaching style, I never would have stood up for myself. I was being thrown around mentally and emotionally by my college softball coach, and because of Coach Joe, I knew I had to do something about it to make the situation better. I knew my potential on the field, and I knew that I deserved respect, just like Coach Joe respected me. Coach has taught me to believe in myself and to take constructive criticism because he believed in me. He believed in my full potential on and off the court and pushed me to be the best that I could. Although sometimes I didn't wanna listen, looking back now, almost five years later, Joe was one of my major influencers in life. The encouragement that Joe has had is simply out of dedication and passion for the sport, not out of spite to make someone feel bad about themselves. Joe respects his players and has a sense of humor that makes the hard days enjoyable, even if it includes running sprints on picture day. His passion for the sport and all the players that he has coached throughout the years is strong, and I strive to be a coach like him. He is a leader, and I should continue to coach here at Eden. He has helped the program so much, and the results are there. I will end this with a quote that I think most people in Eden, the Eden community should listen to. Let the teachers teach in school, let the parents parent at home, and let the coaches coach, no matter where. Do not break that border, or you will ruin a lot of things for children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Jeff Woodard. I am the parent of two, of one current student, one recent graduate. I come forward tonight to speak enthusiastically about the upcoming Eden Girls Varsity Basketball Program under head coach Joe Doherty. The team is returning a core group of players that will not only contend for the league title, but for a sectional title as well. Their high level of play can be credited to Coach Doherty's knowledge of the game and his players, whom he coaches with passion and compassion. He emphasizes a strong work ethic and sportsmanship. For players who are willing to put in the work and the effort, take his feedback and apply it, there is no better high school coach in Western New York than Joe Doherty. We have two daughters, as I mentioned, who played for Coach Doherty over the past five years. We've seen the care he takes in his players. There is a cookie cake for every player birthday. There are snacks in the locker room before practice. If someone needs it, dinner. And at Christmas, a pair of Eden maroon crocs for every player. He has very much been a father figure to this team, and it showed when every player went to his wedding on Valentine's Day in 2018. Our oldest daughter played in the varsity team for three years before graduating this spring. Basketball wasn't her first sport, and her playing time decreased over those three years because she didn't commit to the sport. But during the season, she accepted that role and stayed positive. And that's one reason she was named a captain her junior and senior years. Following her senior year, and unbeknownst to her, Coach Doherty helped secure a scholarship that'll help her pay for books in college. This for a player he benched and reduced her playing time. Coach Doherty loves the game, and he loves to teach it. And our daughters are better players and better people for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Zittle. I have two daughters, one a freshman and one a sophomore. Currently, both players for Joe Doherty, but also both honors students, so I'm gonna start there. My first concern is the eliminating of the honors program for math and science in the high school. I think this is a serious mistake. I think it's disappointing. I think it's a completely different environment. And I think the communication to the community and the parents about this decision was nonexistent. I think it will lead to a lower ranking of Eden High School and Eden schools generally. And I think it should be revisited. Back to Coach Joe. The quotes that I love from Coach Joe. Don't get outworked. What goes up, comes down. You miss all of the shots that you don't take. Take care of the ball. Trust your teammates. Be patient, and the cream will rise to the top. These are just a few of the lessons that Coach Joe has taught both of my daughters, and things that they will take with them both on and off the court. He gives his time freely and willingly, and I have submitted a written submission to the board detailing all the time that Joe puts in to his team and to all of his players. Specifically, my daughter, when she was in a situation where she was not treated fairly by an AAU program, Joe was the first one to stand up for her. When she was injured this summer, he was the first one to be right there for her, tell her she would get through it, and tell her through hard work she would come back. This alleged incident is by far an outlier. I know Coach Joe. I know how much he cares. I know how much time he puts in. He is not a person that I'm concerned about would ever intentionally, emotionally harm or have any harm to any student or player. He goes out of his way to make sure his team is safe. In my view, this is simply a generational gap among coaching, for which he has shown a willingness to remediate and re-educate. Losing Coach Joe would be another mistake by the district. You will never find another coach as dedicated, as loyal to Eden, and who has made as much of a difference in his players' lives. Coach Joe needs to stay, and Eden is lucky to have him.
Thank you.
Good evening. Whoa! I may not mean this, Sandy, excuse me. I am very inadequate in standing here before you, and my name is Paul Zittle, otherwise known as Grandpa Zittle. And I went to this school, I graduated from this building, long before most of you were probably born. So I know Eden pretty darn well, and I have watched sports over the year. There's one young lady there that coached at East Aurora. And my so, whoa, excuse me, my sons and my daughter tried for years to beat that lady, and they couldn't. You know why? 'Cause she's good. Okay? Now, we've got a coach in Eden that is really good. Does he make mistakes? You better believe it. Do I make mistakes? You better believe it. I make more mistakes than the average. But I've watched over the years, and I've seen a board just like this one make mistakes that cost one student a scholarship to MIT. It could have destroyed two other people, that one became a doctor, one became, is moved very, very high ranking in the Navy. And these were good kids. But mistakes are made. Every one of us make mistakes. And I think Joe probably has made mistakes. But do I think he is good? You better believe I think he is good. Do I think he is good for Eden? You better believe I think he's good for Eden. I have two granddaughters that are coming up. One just came back three weeks ago from Princeton University at the end of her freshman year because they wanted to look at her because she played under one good coach, and her name was well-known. There's another young lady who's gonna be a junior this year, who will probably get scholarships. If we replace this man, I don't know that any one of them have the potential to be where they're gonna be. Now, does that make it right? I'm not saying that. But I, for one, and I'm looking every one of you in the eye, am standing behind this man because I believe in him, and I believe he's good, and I believe he's good for Eden, and I believe that he's good for my grandchildren, and for every other person on that team. Mistakes? You better believe it. Mistakes by me? You better believe it. And I'll finish with that. But I'm standing behind that man, and I believe it would be a mistake by this board to replace him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Baloo. I have four children that have either gone to Eden or are currently at Eden. One of my daughters wanted to come and speak today. Unfortunately, her coach was not willing to give up some preseason practice to come back and speak. So she-
Mrs. Baloo?
Yes.
You're tall, and the microphone is not.
No.
So if you could just talk closer to the mic? We wanna make sure we can hear you.
Okay. So she was not released from preseason. She's off at college right now, but she sent me a text and wanted me to read it to you. Unfortunately, I did not bring my glasses, so I'll do the best I can. Joe Doherty was my high school basketball coach, but he has made a lasting impact on me as a young player and as a young adult. He has taught me many valuable life lessons, how to work hard, how to play hard, and how to never give up. He taught me to set goals and fight hard to achieve them. I know, I know you may hear a lot of those generic terms about coaches, but I never truly appreciated all I have learned from him until I left Eden and went off to college. Excuse me. As I watched so many of my teammates struggle on the court and in the classroom, I remember Joe's words. Work harder, run faster, be better. You can do it. I know you can do it. Of course, at that time, I might have wanted to just throw a basketball at him, but these were truly words that play a part in not only my success on the court, but my success in the classroom. Joe is the type of coach that gives 110% of his time and energy into each and every player. You would be the best player, or you would be the worst player, and Joe would still be the same, give you the same opportunity in coaching. I still keep in contact with Joe and have even helped him out with some open gyms and some early games that he volunteers to run to benefit the students here at Eden. So today, Joe is not just my basketball coach. He is my friend, my mentor, the person who believed in me and pushed me to be the best person I could be. Not having Joe as part of Eden Athletics would be a huge loss, not only to the basketball program, but to our athletic community. Thank you. Sincerely, Megan Baloo.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. New business. Resignations. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of elementary teacher Catherine Sherry be accepted effective June 25th, 2019. Second. Any discussion? Just for discussion purposes, Catherine was an employee of ours for one day before she expected a position in another district. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of music teacher Ariana Nkow be accepted effective August 8th, 2019. Second. Any discussion? This is the position that was vacated by Kathy Jeffers, which is a .66 or a part-time position, and this teacher accepted a full-time position in another district after having accepted the part-time here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of elementary cafeteria monitor Toni Marie Anzweeny be accepted effective July 30th, 2019. The board and administration wish to thank Mrs. Anzweeny for her two years of service to the district. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cleaner Deborah Colassa be accepted effective August 29th, 2019. The board of administration wish to thank Mrs. Colassa for her 20 years of service to the district. Second. Any discussion? Debbie will certainly be missed. She certainly worked way above her job title at the building. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cleaner Dan Wass be conditionally accepted effective August 28th, 2019, dependent upon his appointment to the laborer position. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Appointments. I don't have to read the guidelines. Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Joseph Lucenti, who is permanently certified as a school administrator supervisor, be appointed as a substitute principal effective August 26th, 2019, and ending approximately October 31st, 2019. Salary is based upon memorandum of understanding. Second. Any discussion? Mr. Lucenti is here. How long have you been retired? Three weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. Oh, wow. And it really was just a joke that I reached out to him as the president of the High School Principals Association, so let's see what they vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Congratulations. Thank you for coming to help us out. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Carolyn J. Stumpf, who is professionally certified in childhood education 1 through 6 and literacy B through 6, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area, probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2019, and ending on August 31st, 2023, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent- Keep going? Okay. Required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of Education Law, in order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3012D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters, step nine. Second. Any discussion? Barb, could you take a moment and just double-check whether this teacher's had tenure in another district? Because it should be three years, not four, if that's the case? And we can come back? Do you wanna temporarily table C? Let's temporarily table C, come back and go on to D. Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Shannon Gallagher, who is permanently certified in special education, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the special education tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2019, and ending on August 31st, 2023. Do I have to read?
We couldn't remember where he was.
Read what?
Read the rest.
Read the rest, okay. Unless extended in accordance with the law, this expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of Education Law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3012D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite of overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters, step one. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Michelle Lindner, who is initially certified in Students with Disabilities B through 2 and 1 through 6, Childhood Education B through 2 and 1 through 6, and Literacy B 6 and 512, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the special education tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1st, 2019, and ending on August 31st, 2023, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of Section 3012 of Education Law, in order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to Section 3012D of the Education Law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters, step one. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Cynthia Zalasko, who is initially certified in music, is hereby appointed as a .66 FTE music teacher effective September 1st, 2019, and ending on June 30th, 2020. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters, step one. Second. Any discussion? She is here tonight, right? Yes? Okay. Let's see how they vote for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Excellent. Congratulations. Thank you. And welcome. All right. Yep. Barb, do we know, yes, she's been permanently cert, or she got tenure in another district? So going back to Carolyn. Press it. So Lucinda, can you roll it back for us to- For Carolyn Stumpf. Carolyn Stumpf. Not to be confused with Carol Stumpf, the kindergarten. You don't need to read it all again. So we're just, but the- It would be ending- The tenure would be ending 2020. Two. 2020, so. All right. So we're voting on item C with the tenure area, September 1st, 2019 to August 31st, 2022. I need- Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you, Barb. All right. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Dan Wass be appointed on probation as a laborer effective August 29th, 2019, and ending on February 28th, 2020. Salary is based upon CSEA contract, Level 5, Step 2. Second. Any discussion? So the earlier motion was dependent on this one. Dan has been cleaning mostly the science wing over at the high school. He's very excited about taking on this position. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jeff Servoni and Lucinda Karstedt be appointed as fitness center coordinators as per the memorandum of agreement. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, registered professional nurse Darlene Smith be increased from point, or 6.7 hours per day to eight hours per day to accommodate bus runs effective September 3rd, 2019. Second. Any discussion? So just to clarify, we do have students who are medically fragile and require a nurse on the bus. Darlene is an RN, and so that is why she would be on the bus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Jennifer Singer, who is certified in childhood education 1 through 6, be appointed as a daily PK5 substitute teacher effective September 1st, 2019, and ending October 31st, 2019. Salary is $100 per day. Mrs. Singer is currently on our per diem substitute list. Second. Any discussion? So just to clarify, Jennifer did start this in the spring of last year. She works either at GLP or at the elementary school every single day. We know we're gonna have at least one substitute need, and so at least we know we can fill that one with someone stable every day. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following people be appointed as fitness center workers. Salary is $11.10 per hour. Chris Archibald, effective June 20th, 2019. Larry Milson, effective July 19th, 2019. Scott Minton, effective July 19th, 2019. Jenna Reed, effective July 29th, 2019. Carrie Hamlet, effective August 7th, 2019. Melissa Morano, effective August 15th, 2019. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Tina Wrigley be appointed as a morning program worker. Salary is $17.50 per hour. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. What do we do with this? That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following ES Erie County Association for School Board team appointments be approved. Barb, do we have?
You need to tell me who you want in these positions. Unless you-
So the voting delegate would be someone who's going.
So, the voting delegate would be someone who's going.
I'm going to the NISBA convention, so...
This would work.
I can do that.
So, Ellen could do that.
So, voting delegate would be Ellen.
Is there anybody else? Anybody else who's thinking they might go to the NISBA conference?
I'll be the alternate. I'm going.
Yeah. So, we just won't have an alternate. All right. Item 2.
Delegate Assembly Representative?
That would be me.
You. And Dan would be there.
So, that would be Jen.
And the alternate is... We don't have to have one. Item 3.
Budget and finance team representative.
You either. We don't have one. And for item 4, I'll be the legislative team.
Legislative team? Okay.
Representative. Second.
An alternate to Ellen?
All right. Any discussion? Oh, do we have a second on that?
We did.
Who seconded?
Didn't. Cheryl?
Cheryl second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Did a jab.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
A little prematurely, but I did.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, an additional labor position be created. Note, this labor will replace the groundskeeper position.
Second. Any discussion?
So, let's go all the way back to January when our groundskeeper, which was a new position from the April prior, resigned from our district. We have not been able to secure another person to replace that groundskeeper at the rate that we offer. So, we're changing course and offering it as a labor position and looking at other alternatives for training this labor on skills necessary to be a groundskeeper.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the 2019-2020 school calendar be revised to include full days of classes on November 5, 2019, and May 19, 2020, and to add a superintendent's conference day on March 16, 2020.
Second. Any discussion?
So, these changes do not change the number of days that our students or our staff attend school. This motion, though, is contingent on a conversation that this board wanted to have about having students on the days that we have the budget vote and the days that we have any other type of legislative vote. So, a conversation is in order at this point so that I'm not being presumptuous.
No, that's correct. We want to have students here the day of the annual budget vote in May and not have an empty campus.
And we talked about just maybe having added security with our SROs or whatever on the day of the voting.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the tax levy for the 2019-2020 school year in the amount of $14,894,179 be approved, which establishes the tax rate per thousand as follows: $22.68 Boston, $44.79 Concord, $31.43 Eden, $21.85 Evans, $22.39 North Collins.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes. I want to point out that while you're seeing these rates, they go up, they go down. Not a single rate is the 3.85 that was adopted in budget because equalization rates have changed. There's been assessment changes. All those things factor into the rates. I get the information from the town assessors in July. I get the equalization rate at the end of July, beginning of August, and everything is sent over to the Tax Department in Erie County to process the bills by August 12.
So, of the 3.8% that we went out at, Eden, Concord, and North Collins all went below the 3.8% increase. Boston and Evans went up. So, the Eden increase was 2.3%, not 3.85. It's the whole equalization, kind of shooting fish in a barrel type thing when we go through this budget process.
Which is why last year Senator Galvin tried to get it changed legislatively to use the prior year's data so that we would know exactly what we were doing in May, but that was defeated. So, we're still stuck with the same old process.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the private use transportation rates for 2019-2020 are $33.94 for a bus driver and $1.35 per mile and $31.07 for a bus attendant.
Second. Any discussion?
These are the rates that are used, and they're generally charged to, like, the PTA when they pay for busing for field trips and stuff like that. So, they've been down... They're down a little bit in the calculation for the bus drivers because we just looked at it, and we changed some of the methodology behind it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, school lunch prices be approved as follows: K through 5 breakfast, $2. K 5 lunch, $2.20. 612 breakfast, $2.10. 612 lunch, $2.30.
Second. Any discussion?
So, each year we're supposed to do a calculation by New York State to make sure that we are charging what they consider fair prices for student lunches. And our federal aid for our breakfast and lunch program is at risk if we don't do so. So, these prices are raised in accordance with that calculation, and the general fund will continue to subsidize the cost of student lunches in Eden Central School.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the following buses be declared accessed. Each bus will be traded toward the purchase of the incoming buses to arrive in August 29... Or August 2019. And there's the following buses and VIN numbers. Six of them, yeah.
Any discussion?
So, basically, it doesn't look like you're getting much money, $3,500 for a bus, but that's more than we can get in any other arena. So, Mary Banco, our head bus driver, does a great job negotiating with the purchase of the new buses to maximize our trade-in values. Mark Clark and Ricky Mozer do a great job keeping the buses in shape so the trade-in values are a little bit higher.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, 40 McGraw-Hill Language Arts books, with that ISBN number, and 100 Holt Mathematics books, with that ISBN number, be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, damaged, broken, unusable items from Eden Elementary be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the draft of the 2019-2020 district goals be approved.
Second. Any discussion?
So, there are a few slight changes on this from last year. I think some refinement was in order. We're super proud of how well our students have done in the past few years, and so we're going to change our focus on a few and continue to drill down on some of the others. This was a shared effort to get to this point.
Will the district goals be posted on the website, obviously, at some point?
Once the board approves, they'll be posted on the website. They've gone out and drafted form to all of our staff, and then the buildings will be responsible for attaching building level goals to them.
Okay.
Perfect. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education authorize a transfer of 2018-2019 unassigned fund balance into the following reserve as of June 30, 2019. Capital Reserve Vehicles, bus, $200,000. Capital Reserve Technology, $150,000. Capital Reserve Building, $700,000. Liability Reserve, $290,000. Repair Reserve, $111,000.
Second. Any discussion?
I'd like to start out with saying these are the funds that in the budget process and in the process of the reserve plan adopted by the board, where we're heading towards funding these appropriately. The Capital Reserve for the vehicles, that requires voter authorization to utilize. That's how we're doing our bus purchases every year. The Capital Reserve for Technology was voter authorized in May of this year. And so, this is the first time we're starting to set funds away to replace the items that we're getting through the Smart Schools Bond Act. The Capital Reserve for Building, that would help fund a future project. Those three reserves all require voter authorization to be utilized. So, they're under the voter control. The Liability Reserve, that is in case there's some sort of liability or lawsuit that would come up. And right now, in the times that we are with the legislation changing and things like the Child Protection Acts that are recently out there, we need to set some funds aside in case something were to be excessive of our liability insurance. And then we have a Repair Reserve, which we use for emergency repairs, which we can either borrow from it, and we'd have two years to pay it back in an emergency repair, or we have a public hearing, and we say, why, we need to use it permanently. And so, we continue to put funds in there to replace things like the COGEN, to work on keeping the field up to date, the turf and such like that, just in case something were to happen, that it would be damaged so that we could repair it and keep things going forward.
So, this has come a long way since 2013. Those first three that Laura is speaking about did not exist when I got here in 2013. That's why a third of the buses were taken off one day in the middle of the school day, and we had to shuffle around trying to find ways to get our students home. The technology is new. Basically, we need to because of the Smart School Band. So, they gave us money to purchase, but you can't... But you need to have a reserve in order to replace. And then the Capital Reserve, also in 2013, there was no money for any type of capital project. And so, it's really important that we build that up as well.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 Professional Development Plan.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
Well, I'm going to start with, which maybe should have come under the buses, but it was written down here, and it's easier for me to work from here. We have three large, brand-new buses coming in. They were purchased via the Equipment Reserve that was approved and authorized by the voters May of this year. They are expected to arrive next week, so hopefully, they'll be ready to roll out for the first day of school. We have two smaller buses that are expected to arrive in early October. And then the Transportation Department sent out the standard letters to all the students and families regarding the bus routes and issues, which prompts some feedback from parents who forgot to tell them that little Joey's going to daycare at this address. So, they're busy fine-tuning the last-minute changes to the routes just to make sure that we're ready for this first day of school so things go off as seamless as possible. They do a great job, and I want to thank Mary Banco and Sherry Stevens in the bus garage for that. Our buildings and grounds, they've been busy painting, cleaning the inside of the buildings to be ready for the start of school. We had a massive furniture purchase this year. So, some of the classrooms in all the buildings are going to look brand-new, and the students should be excited. I know some of the staff has been excited as they've seen the positive changes. They also were authorized by the voters to purchase a tractor, a new tractor, for buildings and grounds. And that tractor, to my knowledge, is sitting in Springville waiting for all the final touches to be put on it, and we expect to get that in the next few weeks, delivered from Lammon Webster. That was bought off a state contract. And then the last thing I wanted to let you know about is And then the last thing I wanted to let you know about is the auditors have arrived Monday. The field work has begun. They should be out of here on Friday, and they will be working diligently to have everything ready for a draft audit for the September board meeting so that we can be in compliance with our submission on October 15th.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
Sure, just a few items. The first thing I'd like to share with the Board of Education is that for the first time in a long time, we've had more students move into the district over the summer than those who have moved out. Now, sometimes this happens. It's also a short summer. We always wait for that big push at the end of the summer when they don't show up because they've transferred to another district. But right now, we are showing an increase in enrollment. Not including pre-K or kindergarten because those are not so stable, but you're at 97, 97, and 104 at grades 1, 2, and 3. Thank goodness that the board approved a new teacher for grade 3, otherwise you would be up over 25 students in a class. Grades 4, 5, and 6 are at 98, 97, and 101. Grades 7, 8, and 9 are at 89, 113, and 100, with a big bubble at grade 8. And then grades 10, 11, and 12 are at 115, 109, and 17. We have officially moved into the smaller numbers, K-12. Remembering back about five, six years ago, 12th grade was at 150-some. So you are pretty stable across the board at 100 to 115, making it much easier for us to decide what we need to do about staffing. I would start to think now about the implications of 104 at 3rd grade for next year at 4th grade. So just keep in mind that this is what the administrators will be paying attention to for the following year. In addition, Lucinda, I'd like you to tell me, if I'm right, that within a week or so we should officially be finished with our capital project? Taking her off-guard here. Is that true? We'll be done? Oh, that's all I need is a thumbs up. So this started in 2013. We are officially going to finish this capital project with a few other projects that were thrown into the middle of it. This summer, with Lucinda's leadership, we have a new PA system, new clocks that have gone in. They're quite, quite updated from where we before, and a completely integrated security system, K-12, where we can put the entire district in a lockdown with one phone call. New pre-K kindergarten playground base, not quite finished yet but going in because we all know that GLP is built on a swamp. And new security cameras inside and out across the district. In addition to that, thank you for parking wherever it is that you ended up trying to find yesterday and today, but we are patching the elementary school parking lot. Microceiling coming on Friday. Our teachers will start on Tuesday of next week, of September 3rd. Our students will start on September 5th, putting us super close to the start of the school year. And just a huge, huge thank you to everybody for a really short summer push this year. We had a late Regents and an early Labor Day. So we'll see everybody in school in about a week and a half.
Student report. Rachel, this is where you would have a chance to say something if you had...
Okay. Yeah. I have that preseason for Fall Athletes has begun, so that's what we've been doing. And other than that, we're ready to come back for the school year and excited for Chromebooks and new desks and such.
Okay. Perfect.
Because for the first time, the high... I keep coming in and out. All of you at the high school have your own mobile device. That's right. Good.
Yeah, you need to check your transportation because that's what it was in. And I just like kind of ripped mine up.
So tell me more?
Well, knowing my daughters are driving to school now, I really don't need to know about transportation, so...
So what did you do?
Luckily, I only ripped one of the two up.
But the notice for the mobile devices was inside that letter?
Yes, it was.
Because it's the only one that goes home, K-12. We were saving postage, Mr. Soffin.
Now for Board Report Roundtable.
Well, I'd like to thank Rachel for being here. Rachel and I got to spend quite a bit of time during the Corn Fest parking, and I kind of gave her some ideas what she needs to start talking about. But Corn Fest went off really well, and then the 5K last night for the sports boosters. I think we had over 130 runners, so two big events in a matter of a couple of weeks. And I just want to thank all the volunteers, the parents and students over the month of August for volunteering for those big fundraisers for the sports boosters.
I would just like to wish everyone a good start to the school year. It'll be exciting. And for those of us who are teaching up here, too, have fun.
The next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, September 18th, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And... Executive Session? That upon the recommendation of the Superintendent, the Board of Education enter Executive Session to discuss the history of a particular person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carried. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.